Here.
Feidler.
Here.
Fox.
Here.
Heck.
Here.
Patrick.
Patrick.
Here.
Kaufman.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Chris Miller. Here.
Looking for a motion to accept the minutes as listed below?
Excellent.
Any comments? Roll call.
Patrick.
Yes.
Feidler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes. Mr. Heck, can I answer your questions?
So we have 4.11, should we move on?
Just read that sentence.
For the following financial report for May 4.11 through 4.12 as listed below.
Fox second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Feidler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Are there any citizens, citizens, students wishing to address the board pending the intended agenda items? Same note, moving on to reports and recommendations superintendent Dr. Heck.
I only have one tonight. We did receive a letter today. It's in your packet. It is from a former teacher and coach Carl Wolf Jr. The request, he had talked to me maybe about a month ago, but the request that he has is the board to consider naming the stadium in the field. So there is some information in there as to something, you know, this is the first time you're getting it, so I'll have you read it over and, you know, at a future meeting, we can discuss kind of where we want to be. But the request is to make the stadium officially the Paul Wentling Stadium and the field the Carl Braver Field. That it would be the Carl Braver Field and the Paul Wentling Stadium. And then he listed in the letter kind of the accomplishments of both Coach Graver and Wentling. And then that was a request that he had made. Other than that, that's the end of my report.
Are there any plaques in the stadium commemorating what they?
There are not. And that's also another option, you know, if I talk to him.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking maybe a different option.
Do we do like a plaque and a dedication, like we're dedicating, you know, this field to two outstanding coaches? I mean, essentially, they're the fathers of soccer at Tallahassee and, you know, and getting the program started and the success of this today and building that, so.
Is there any other recognition of any other coaches that took any of the teams to states?
Or is not?
Like Ed Friend who took the track team to states in 1988.
There might be in the display cases, I don't know. There's nothing that shows anywhere.
All right, moving on to items for board action, Mrs. Call.
9.0.1, I approve the following job description as listed.
Any comments? Roll call.
Chris Miller. Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Feidler.
Yes.
9.0.2, I make the motion to approve Dr. Dennis' court as the school safety and security coordinator per Act 55 requirement that a school administrator must be named in this, to this role.
Excellent.
Any comments?
The only thing I'll mention is Mike, the Act 55 requires that it actually be, Chris Kerschner does all the heavy lifting, if you will, but the, and that is his role. The state requires that a school administrator be officially named as the person in that role. So Mike was the admin before named in that and filed with the state, and Dennis will be, will take that role.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Feidler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
All right, moving on to 9.1, finance, Mr. Heck.
9.1.1, approve the adoption of final budget for the 2023-24 school year to project the expenditures of $40,221,713 and project the revenues of $40,221,713, including a real estate tax military rate of 25.3 at 5.11 per capita tax of $5. School code section 609 for capital tax of $5. One half percent earned income tax and one half percent real estate transfer.
Fox second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Bats.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Feidler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes. All right, 9.1.2. Approve the adoption of the 2023-24 home state and farm state exclusion resolution.
Fox second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Feidler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
9.1.3, approve the tax resolution to levy taxes for the 2023-24 school year.
Fox second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Clark.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Feidler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
9.1.4. Approve administration to make any necessary general entries and budget transfers to the financial statements of this school district after June 30th, 2024.
Fox second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Feidler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
9.1.5. Approve the commitment of funds for the following categories in accordance with GSSB 54 and Board Policy 620. Special education program, athletic facility improvements, curriculum. Specific amounts for each category will be determined at a later date following the 22, 23 school financial board.
Fox second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Feidler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
9.1.6. Approve UPMC Primary Care Frederickburg to sign off on PCA services for access billing at $35 per IUP for the 23-24 school year. There will be no rate increase from last year.
Fox second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Patrick.
Yes.
Feidler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes. All right, moving on to 9.2, buildings and grounds and technology, Mr. Heck.
9.2.1. Approve the purchase of Dell Latitude Series laptops from Dell Computer Incorporated at a cost of $31,452.18 in accordance with the district technology plan for state.
Fox second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Feidler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
9.3.2. Elementary playground and outdoor classrooms proposal, potential board authorization.
Fox second.
So, well, that's just a, this is an informational thing for now. About two months ago, three months ago, we talked about some work at our building and grounds meetings, some work that has to happen at our playgrounds. The rubber padding on the playground at Bethel is deteriorating and it is separating, so there's repair work that needs to be done. To replace that is about $140,000, right, Matt, about $140,000. To repair it was about $15,000, but that bought us maybe two years, three years, and we would be right back to where we are. So we were looking at different options, Penn Burnville, they have mulch in theirs. The drainage isn't adequate there, we need to rip that all out, put drainage. It's a mud pit when it rains now, so that needs work done. So we started doing numbers. Matt, at that point, had presented that to go with rubber mulch is about $36,000 per playground. And then we know that there's some drainage work that has to be done at PB. And so we were looking at other options that are available. In our, in looking at these options, we ran across turf as one of those options. And so if you remember back, one of the things that we had allocated in our S R is outdoor spaces. Both outdoor refreshing, outdoor playgrounds, as well as outdoor classrooms. So we did reach out to two firms on what turf within the playgrounds would cost. One firm was half a million dollars, just shy of, just a little bit less than half a million dollars. The other firm is, is the firm that Shaw, who did our turf on the field. And their product seems to be quality as it's outlived its life or estimated life on that turf. Their quote or their rough estimate is a little over $200,000. So initially in talking with Brian as to how we would proceed if we were interested in pursuing something like this, it would be fully S R funded, federal funding. The money has been allocated to those outdoor spaces in our application, it's been approved. But in conversations with Brian, his viewpoint is that we should go out to bid on a project like this to get the best cost as opposed to pursuing Co-Stars. In kind of looking at numbers as to where they would be, you know, we're, if we put rubber mulch in, we dig it out, we do drainage, and a lot of that work is going to be done ourselves. We're pushing, you know, over the life of the turf, which is somewhere between 10 and 15 years. We're probably pushing, you know, over $100,000 anyway, sunk into those playgrounds to get the rubber mulch and get things to where it needs to be. Maintenance wise, it seems to make sense to pursue turf, especially with the grant money that's out there and the federal stimulus money that's out there. But we wanted to bring it to the full board to have that discussion. We could get, based off of where we've asked different vendors, we'd be able to get this project completed prior to the start of the year or just into September potentially, depending on how we would bid it, get quotes, or bid it and get that approved. But it looks like when you're looking at 10 to 15 years longevity, the turf might actually be the more cost effective way to go. The constantly refreshing mulch, pulling it out, putting new mulch in, rubber mulch, whichever way we go. But I'll open it up, kind of some discussions. I don't know if, Matt, you wanted to talk anything about on the operations side?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
What is the warranty on the turf?
It is a 10-year warranty.
Because obviously playgrounds get used very hard, so it's guaranteed to be intact and look presentable for 10 years. Is that prorated or is that, hey, that spot needs to replace and it's nine years, 364 days, we're replacing it or is it a prorated clause?
I'm sure that they would do is they would cut out section. What they told us when we met with them is the biggest area that they find on, on turf, on turf playgrounds is the swing center. So their recommendation is that you would put pads under the swings to help, you know, alleviate that wear.
And they would do that.
Yeah.
And what's the expiration on the S R funds? When does it have to be used by?
That particular S R is September 30th of this year.
Has to be committed or spent?
Spent and students should experience something called benefit from the cost. So if it's done in September.
So if there's nothing else more beneficial to utilize those funds on, then this is at the general consensus?
Well, so at this point, reapplying for S R two grant that's up in September is not necessarily not, but we had put aside library projects and the outdoor spaces for the, a chunk of money in this that we just, we're doing the library projects currently, but it's the last step of that S R two funding that we discussed. So it's already allocated to it and we really can't change it at this point. We can use it for different types of operating space on what we want to do, but that's where we explored turf. And then in addition to that, there's like a 50 by 50, put outdoor classroom rates outside of Penn Burnville, it'll be in addition to playgrounds. So it'd be, it'd be another outdoor educational space for learning in addition to getting the playgrounds up.
If there's enough of that funding there to cover the full 200.
Plus or minus? About 240,000 left.
Correct.
That would cover. So it covers some.
Drainage.
Yeah, it covers.
So that extra money then could be for tables and whatnot for the outdoor classroom space?
Yeah, our plan is to look at some poly furniture that'll hold up over the years and give some seats and seating areas to outside and learn.
Can it come in totally colors?
The furniture?
No, the turf, like it's not going to be green. Grass looking turf.
Would that be more, would that cost?
It's, to go color wise, it's 25 cents per square yard.
What's the standard color? Pretty green.
So because it's, it's, it's a little bit, it's a little thicker product, so they have to put a much, so at Bethel, they can reutilize that foam or that rubber surface. They have to repair sections of it where it's deteriorated and it's, you know, blown apart. But there has to be a shock pad underneath that has to meet certain regulations that if they fall. So on Bethel's side, we can, we can do the shock, we can use that existing padding for a shock if it's under there. PB, they would have to put a holder shock pad in. But the turf is, is not a field turf, it's a lawn turf that you utilize, so it's a little bit thicker. It's, it looks a little bit more like grass, if you will.
My last question, if we need to take this out to bid, what's the chances that they're bidding higher than their price that they said they do it for now?
Is that a possibility? I guess it could be a possibility.
Possibility, but I know somebody else who did the project, so it depends a little bit, sure.
So the commitment tonight, what we would ask is to allow us to develop and put it out to bid. Obviously, we'd have to come back to the board in July when we see what those numbers look like. So at that point is where we would make, need to make that commitment. You know, the commitment tonight would be just to authorize us to go out to bid, to develop it, go out to bid, to be able to bring better numbers or hard numbers. To.
You can still opt to go with the Co-Stars program.
That is where, I don't know if you want to speak to that or?
Yeah, sure. So we had some issues and some concerns with the Co-Stars process. Recently, at another district, we had an issue where they were trying to purchase something for Co-Stars. And we ended up reaching out to a Co-Stars representative because we couldn't find the contract on Co-Stars. Having Co-Stars now wrote a contract, we wanted to look into it because part of what they talked about was they wanted to supply what's called ancillary services as part of the contract. Typically, if you have too many services combined, Co-Stars is supposed to be sorted for one issue. And if you have a lot of different services, it's supposed to be fit out and not lumped in one. So we wanted to check the contract to see if the ancillary services that they wanted were included. And we couldn't find the contract on Co-Stars. So we reached out to a Co-Stars representative and they said, okay, well, we'll look for it. Few days passed by, they said they can't find, their own representative said, well, actually, we can't find the contract on Co-Stars. So had they purchased it through that, that would probably be a big problem. Ultimately, they said, well, we found something that's essentially parallel to the contract question, so essentially it's been approved through Co-Stars. Even then though, what we found is, is two things. One, they're still trying to tack on ancillary services that I think probably don't meet the definition of ancillary services, which could put us in trouble. And two, there's a really significant market. We found out that originally when the Co-Stars price was given, it was a certain number. And then by the time we returned, talking to the Co-Stars representative, they jacked up the price 30%. And so our questions were, how, how could this possibly be? You said this was the Co-Stars number, Co-Stars is supposed to represent a fair bid and it's already processed. They said, well, you know, the market changes. And ultimately, the Co-Stars representative ended up saying they can, or kind of do, put their own prices on it. Because the numbers of the prices themselves aren't fit. They get the items and the contracts approved through Co-Stars. But the prices apparently, we were told, they could just be adjusted. So there was a 30% markup for no arguable reason. So combining some of the issues we've had, you know, some of the companies have tried to, I think, shoehorn these massive projects through Co-Stars by just finding a contract that's to one particular issue and saying, well, this is an ancillary service. And that is an ancillary service and expanding into this huge contract that probably legally needs to be bid. The other issue I think in anticipating, are there any problems to look out for on the horizon? Is understanding that because this is S R money, wanting to be a little bit careful about what we do and not making any mistakes and not violating any procurement code issues because it's government money and we don't want to come back and find out or be told that we misuse the S R. So it's a combination of a couple of different issues that's making us cautious about Co-Stars in general. So I think the safest way to do it is probably just to fit it out. Because of that experience, I think because of other experiences, I think it's probably unlikely that the Co-Stars price ends up being the lowest price and then once it's fit out, it ends up being higher. Maybe that's the case, maybe not, but I just think it probably will be the case. If it just bids, we know the order is clear, it will be all right.
I think that's where we don't want to hit ourselves where we all of a sudden get an audit and they're saying, you have to pay that money back to the company. We initially, in reaching out to the companies, yeah, you know, we've done Co-Stars projects. And there is no clear guidance from the state as to where Co-Stars fits, whether. So to be on the safe side, I think we kind of backtracked a little bit and want to do the bidding process if we're, if we're interested in pursuing this.
Just like you were already.
Yeah.
You would have been there for that.
Is there any harm in bidding both options or are we settled?
Bidding both options, yes.
Putting back what's there.
Oh. Right?
Yeah.
I mean, we could, we could put together, if you did one as a, I guess a bid and one as an alternate, right?
Yeah, we get the same companies for the alternates. I think the turf companies are a good promotion.
Now, there was like the rubber.
You could put out two bids and you could pick which one you want to go with.
I mean, it doesn't hurt, we can always reject it, right? So if you're okay with us pursuing that, we would just need a motion to authorize us to go to develop the bids and then to place it out.
So we need a motion to the board to say that?
I mean, the, I think it's already a discussed item. Do you want to add it? Could I have a motion to allow the general to add a motion? So.
Fox second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Feidler.
Yes.
Now, I guess I'll make the motion that we authorize administration of options. So to take a few down there.
Fox second.
Any? Any, any comments? Roll call.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Feidler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to have Mr. Heck just continue right on with 9.3 and 9.4.
Okay. All right, 9.3.1. Approve the consent of assignment of the contract for transportation of school people in July 1st, 2022 to the Tallahassee Area School District and Brandywine Tallahassee LLC to Christ Transportation Corporation.
Fox second.
Any comments?
This is, this is the bus company change.
So there is, Christ is acquiring, Christ is looking to acquire Brandywine Trans. Brandywine Tallahassee. Our contract is with Brandywine and within that contract, it says that they cannot, they cannot transfer the contract from Brandywine to Christ without our board authorizing that transfer.
Is that consistent with the administration today?
And the terms stay the same?
Yes, they have to inherit the contract as it stands.
And how does the law technically? We have a rule that we have to add on to the contract.
We just have to.
That would be an.
We would, we would.
We would add that, we could, in theory, we could just say, hey, you got two more bus runs or three more bus runs that whatever that contract specifies for this year. The VCEU was also putting together cohorts for us as well, so.
Any comments? Roll call.
Bats.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Feidler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes. 9.4.1. To second reading, final approval to the following policies, 251 on the schools.
Fox second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Feidler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
All right, moving on to 9.5, record room, Mrs. Call.
9.5.1, I make the motion to approve the affiliation agreement between Tallahassee Area School District and Co-stown University as predetermined. and Kuntown University as presented.
Heck second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Clough.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Heck.
Feiler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Coffin.
Yes.
Nine point five point two, I make a motion to approve the agreement with Hamburg Area School District for students to attend Tophawken Area School District Agricultural Program for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year as presented.
Heck second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Heck.
Feiler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Coffin.
Yes.
Clough.
Nine point five point three, I make a motion to approve the ARP ESSR's funding proposal for staff professional development connected with Menno Howe Pass presented at the June sixth, two thousand twenty-three board meeting.
Heck second.
Any comments?
Yeah, is that something that can be viewed really?
It's just a one year.
It's just a one year thing because of the payback.
Any other comments, once they're done, I mean, they're trained, once they're trained, it's done.
We'll follow up internally to keep it.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Heck.
Feiler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Coffin.
Yes.
Clough.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Moving on to personnel, nine point eight, Mr. Palmer.
Nine point eight point one, I knew that we approved the change in employment status for the following staff, starting with the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as listed in the agenda.
I'm second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Patrick.
Heck.
Feiler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Epstein.
Bass.
Yes.
Coffin.
Yes.
Clough.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Nine point eight point two, I knew that we approved the support staff compensation plan as presented to the board with new minimum starting rates, the following rates below. The plan also calls for rate adjustments for existing staff members to compensate for new starting rates as listed below.
I'm second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Feiler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Epstein.
Bass.
Yes.
Coffin.
Yes.
Clough.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Heck.
Nine point eight point three, I knew that we approved the request to terminate the sabbatical leave from Linda Davis effective eight one, twenty twenty-three.
Heck second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Coffin.
Yes.
Clough.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Heck.
Feiler.
Yes.
Nine point eight point four, I knew that we approved the administrative salaries for twenty-three, twenty-four school year based on the Act ninety-three agreement and written contracts as presented to the board.
Heck second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Heck.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Coffin.
No.
Clough.
No.
Palmer.
Yes, with our expectation.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Heck.
Feiler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Nine point eight point five, I move that we authorize Dr. Nestic to make employment offers, offers necessary to fill all vacancies pending consultation with the Personnel Committee and Board President to ensure positions are filled in a timely manner. All employment offers will be ratified at the appropriate board session.
Heck second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Bass.
Yes.
Coffin.
Yes.
Clough.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Heck.
Feiler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Nine point eight point six, I move that we approved the rescind the approval of Anthony Kreiser as a district custodian.
Heck second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Coffin.
Yes.
Clough.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Heck.
Feiler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Nine point eight point seven, I move that we approve a child bearing, child bearing legal absence for Ashley Moyer, grade six, at Burnville Elementary from approximately eight twenty-three through eleven twenty-eight, twenty-three.
Heck second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Clough.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Patrick.
Heck.
Feiler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Coffin.
Yes.
Nine point eight point eight, I move that we accept the resignation of Allison Ballmer, junior senior high school life teacher effective six nineteen, twenty twenty-three.
Heck second.
Any comments? I'll just say this is disappointing. All those in favor, give a consent to say a no. Those no.
I'd just like to thank Allison for what she's done to bring our Ag Department full circle and that we greatly increased participation in the Ag program via through Allison's leadership. And she's going back to our home district, that's why we're losing her. So it's not, she, it was a really tough decision for her. But we do really appreciate what she's brought to the top and what she's done for the Ag program. And I would like to thank her publicly.
I have an echo with Milson, Allison has done a tremendous job. You know, we went from a dying program where we went from two teachers to one teacher. Back to Allison as being one teacher and driving it back up and certainly to make it successful. One person couldn't do it and we were able, fortunate to get Amy Garber as well. And Amy does a phenomenal job right along. So, you know, while we're missing one, we still have a phenomenal teacher in Amy and, you know, we'll find somebody to replace Allison and keep our program going. But it is a very healthy, strong program and Allison is a big part of that. And so we'll congratulate her and I know she's going home, it's a homecoming, the district she lives in. So it will be a head for our district.
They took two, two bus, or two van loads of kids to the national convention this past year and I can't remember the last time we had that many kids go to the national convention. There's not much interest.
So we just were at a state convention last week and we had the number one placing turf student, Mason Westner. And as a team, the turf team took the hardest block. First in the state for turf management, so. Exceptional group of science agricultural students. Great, is there anybody that has any new business?
Any old business? Are we looking at fuel oil business or?
I don't want to get out there. I could put it out there.
Or can we do the pricing like we did this past time? Just check indoor. Twenty-four point five.
Can under events is listed there. Pretty bleak. Is there any citizens who wish to address the board this evening?
Oh, me? Oh, me?
Yeah. You don't want them to put your hand up.
I don't know, it didn't look like you were pointing to me. Okay, so the, just wrote down a few questions that I have, obviously regarding reading. So Act forty-five was approved for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year to provide a roadmap to help students post COVID. So with Act forty-five, they offer thirty and sixty hour course options. So I was curious how our teachers are getting the training for this. I think it's required based on the act that I read. Dr. Matlack, do you know?
Okay, so Act forty-five requires that we offer, well, that any participating district offers professional development or goes through SAS for teachers K through three, teacherly literacy. So there are SAS courses already built. And that is a requirement that the next time you go through comprehensive planning, that needs to be built into the professional development portion of the comprehensive planning.
So how, how is it determined what the teachers are taking the thirty or the sixty? It looks like it's an option based on the way that the act reads.
Give me one second to pull back up. Do you have another question?
Sure, I do, I'll go on, okay. Well, so again, it's based on the Act forty-five. So upon completion, it says that they'll be provided with a certificate. And I was wondering if they're to provide that to the district. It looks like it's done through the state and I guess, so when they're finished, they'll receive a certificate. Is it a pass fail or is it just that they do it, that there's no, do they have to do well? And are you requiring them as a board to provide you with the certificate to show that they've actually completed the task? And who determines the thirty or the sixty? The teacher? Continuing that in case the board doesn't know what I'm talking about.
So that is determined by the PDE, the district. As far as I know, the district is not responsible for providing any kind of like certificate of completion or anything like that to candidates.
Well, no, it shows that upon completion, that the, the teacher would hit a button and they would be given a certificate. But my question is, do they have to provide that to the district? And does the district require them to show that they've actually done what the law requires? I know from my continuing ed, I have to prove it. I was just curious if it needed to be proved here and if they know about it and if they're requiring it.
I mean, anything that's a state mandate has to be tracked and we collect the certification.
That's why I was wondering, you guys collect it?
A hundred percent we do. I mean, whether it's proctoring assessments or Act seventy-one with suicide awareness, all of that stuff we have to track.
You guys collect that, okay. Did you, I, so I was, one of the questions that I had asked is the thirty or the sixty, what determines that, do you know?
Well, a lot of it is that we are in year one of the current comp plan. So we've still got two years in our comp plan, so we start looking at the next one. That's when we have to incorporate.
That's when you incorporate this in, okay.
And to be honest, in August, as with one fifty-five and the school safety, like a mandated school safety training that had to be done this year.
Right.
The state still hasn't developed that and that was supposed to be done by now. So there's a lot of requirements that are out there without the actual measuring stick. So a hundred percent that'll be built in. That's going to correlate real nicely with the literacy plan that Dr. Matlack presented last time anyway. So as we start looking at some of the language and verbiage, especially the science of reading in those pieces, how we're bringing professional development that's meaningful, actually talking about what is best for our, our early readers and our developing readers. And then that'll get filtered into the next phase of comp plan.
Okay, so I do have some other questions. I also wanted to know what direction ELA instruction is going. So I'm glad that you're here tonight, so it kind of, so probably.
So now I've got my topic. Can you give me where to go, like, what are you, what are you looking for specifically for?
Okay, so are we going to have structured literacy framework?
Yes.
Okay. And if we're going to be doing that, what are the resources that we'll be using to implement that framework?
So we are trying to make sure that we're striking a balance between buying resources, but also having teachers who are, as Act fifty-five, or Act forty-five is trying to get to the point of having teachers who are experts in brother literacy that are able to move forward with providing intervention, providing help without necessarily having to rely on a single program that they're going to. So right now, we already have the apples, Apple Connection group pieces that many teachers have gone through the training for. So we have that physical resource there to fall back on. Our focus is providing the professional learning so that, that Apple Connections is a tool, but it isn't a always necessarily your bible, that you have this and only this to go by. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does. So, but is that the only resource or what other resources? Because if you're saying that this isn't the only thing that they can use, what are those other things?
So as the tier one level right now, like we have our CKLA from K to five that we have as primary.
But CKLA doesn't meet structured literacy. So where are you going to be?
The state is responsible for determining what programs. That's part of the next round of legislation. The state will take the responsibility of determining these are existing programs or existing curricula that meet the, their definition of structured literacy. And they should have the opportunity to be able to say, we're going to do one of these or here's what we're proposing to do and have PDE approve that.
But if we're using CKLA and I believe we're using that K through five, that doesn't meet that standard.
Which, what standard are you referring to?
Explicit, systematic, sequential and multisensory.
It's designed, so tier one instruction for literacy in terms of the multisensory piece. The CKLA as it's designed does not present as multisensory, but multisensory as a requirement isn't a tier one, everybody needs to get that.
But if you're having a structured literacy program, none of those components can be missing, which means multisensory needs to be there.
So.
I'm kind of going to stop here and just kind of interject. I'm going to encourage you, I'm going to encourage you, Lisa, to have like, kind of like a sidebar with him to pick his brain on some of that. I don't feel like this is kind of something.
I can, I wouldn't.
Public comment, if that's okay. I mean, if you have something else, I'll let you go ahead with anything else you want to address the board.
Well, it's all about reading and I think that the board should be interested in what's going on in our reading programs as well as parents that are here or grandparents that are here should be interested in what's going on with that. Because how are you supposed to hold them accountable if you haven't got a clue?
The only thing I would say is, from our perspective, we're just getting questions thrown at us and why does this not meet and what does this meet? And there's no, you know, we're being asked to answer these questions on the fly. I mean, my understanding of Act forty-five is it is not required by the state. But you're citing that it is required. So that's where we need to, you know, if you want to give us the questions, we'll gladly, at the next board meeting, answer all those questions publicly. But if you can kind of give us that opportunity so that we're not giving answers on the fly, it would be appreciated, I think.
I would have thought that it would be something that you would know since you're supposed to be the expert. So I will write them down and you can have them ready for me at the next meeting.
You have to understand, at any point, anybody can stand up here and just roll out of the line and then we instantly have to be able to respond to that.
And, and if you don't have it, you know, I appreciate you saying, you know what? Let us think about this, we'll get back to you and we'll answer it at the next meeting. I'm okay with that, I'm okay with that. I woke up in a panic this morning thinking about the reading programs and these were the things that were kind of going through my brain, so I thought I would pass that.
More than willing to give it, just so we, we here, me personally, this, we have a three-year plan now. And this has nothing to do with the remainder of that plan. This has to go in.
this, we have a three-year plan now, and this has nothing to do with the remainder of that plan. This has to go into the next plan. So essentially, we have two years to learn this and get good at this new mandate guideline outlook, whatever you want to call it.
But we've got two years lost as well, you know, by, I've never been a fan of CKLA, to be honest with you, since it's been implemented here. But I just feel that that's two years of learning, so if you've got, say, a first grader, she's going to be, you know, in third grade before something new comes around or how it should be, you know? The learning to read isn't a new thing.
Right. Let me just say, we're not waiting two years.
That's what I want to know.
The professional learning, the focus of the comprehensive literacy plan that was presented last time. The main takeaway there is professional learning, that is self-identifying need, so that's where we're putting our eggs. Dr. Perk has said this a number of times, it's, it's about people, not programs. So we want to make the investment in as much professional learning as we can for staff, especially at that K three level and early literacy, so that they're as robust as they can possibly be in terms of what they need to be for professional learning with that early literacy piece, so that as we have programs and as we have other, you know, physical things to be using, they're able to make the determination of what works best in the moment with each student.
Right, and, and I totally agree, having the teachers trained appropriately, which is why I brought in the Act forty-five, wanting to know that they're and how they're being trained.
The lynchpin of your question is why I was looking for the sidebar.
In order to deliver what our children need, in order to.
So can you get us your questions and honestly for administration, can you get something together for us on this Act forty-five? So we can all learn together for next time, if that's fair.
Yeah, so, so the other question I have too, I have two more questions.
Jason, I think you're really exhausted.
Okay.
That time, time period tonight. Are they retaining the same thing or are they something completely different?
Nope, same thing.
Okay.
Let it go.
That's, yeah, yeah, email it and we'll, we'll have open dialogue next time on the Act forty-five. Is there anyone else that has anything else to, to add to, to see? Mr. Sadis, your hand went up, I thought you were going to talk to us tonight.
He can't hear you.
What, who was it?
Mrs. Sadis.
Oh, Helen.
I just wanted to pay you back what Mr. Palmer said about Mrs. Palmer leaving, or Ballmer leaving. My nick was one of them that was in the turf grass team that won, and this is like totally outside of his realm and actually, Mrs. Ballmer was able to like, along with Mrs. Barrett, his special ed teacher, kind of got him going into like a program that he'll be able to further and is looking for now to go into school for, so I just wanted to say thank you for allowing the kids to go and for supporting the program because it's, it's really neat seeing everybody.
That's what we like to hear, because a lot of kids that get, there's so many different fields out there that you get exposed to it and you can see a career that they might not even talk about three years ago.
And I got to see, I had to pick my son up early from the conference because he already had a trip planned, and I got to see all the kids up there and like, you know, it was so neat talking to them and hearing about all the exciting things that they were doing and my husband went to Penn State, but we also got to go and see all the turf fields and just hearing the excitement and the foreboys' voices and just the two days that they were there and got to go to the, they met with the head grounds crew keeper at Nittany Stadium and they were just excited, so. I just wanted to thank the board for letting them go and just personally say it changed lives, so thank you.
There's a lot of excellent opportunities through that program. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing nothing, I'm looking for a motion to the chair.
So move.